We are back in open session after our executive session starting at 6 o'clock. With regard to the open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the audience recording this meeting tonight? Being none, can we all stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have public comments, and I'll ask Deb Grimo to come forward, please. Yes, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know that the Riley Award Committee met last Monday night, and the recipient this year for the 2019 John N. F. O'Reilly Outstanding Citizen Award is Roberta Briggs. She has been notified, and the award will be given at the Thanksgiving Eve Ecumenical Service, which will be held at the First Congregational Church on Thanksgiving Eve, 7:30 November 27th. So I just wanted to let you know that and let anybody know that they want to come and attend.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I know that we came back from our executive session. Is there anybody else in the audience for a public comment? Okay, my turn. I have a public comment on a town manager conference. Our town manager, Julie Jacobson, is a member of the Mass Municipal Association Board of Directors and is first vice president of Mass Municipal Management Association, has membership in the International City and County Management Association. This is the leading association of local government professionals dedicated to creating and sustaining thriving communities throughout the world. She attended the association's conference in Nashville, Tennessee this past week. At the conference, awards are given each year in creative contributions to professional local management and promotes the role of profession. Let me start back. At the conference, awards are given each year in creative contributions to professional local management and promotes the role of the profession contributes to the quality of our life in cities, towns, and counties. She was nominated by her peers for the League of Women in Government Leadership Trailblazer Award. Although Julie did not receive the award, she was one of the top 10 finalists. The association is international, and she was one of the top 10 of the world members to be nominated. Julie Jacobson is distinguished, she's accomplished, and highly respected among her peers, and she's Auburn's town manager. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. May I, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for recognizing it and also just for your support since I've been here, because I couldn't have accomplished that without all of you and all of the team that I work with. I just have an absolutely outstanding management team and team of employees all through town government, and we just work well together, and I think we accomplish a lot because we all work well together. So as much as I might have been nominated for the award, I share it with all of us because I think it's just an accomplishment that we all collectively work hard for. So I want to thank you for your support and thank you for your acknowledgement of it. It was exciting just to get to that point and to be a top 10 finalist. It was really pretty amazing, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the -- any of the other board members have any comments?
Huge congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next thing we have is public hearings and presentations at 7 o'clock. We'll take the first one. It's the Feng Restaurant Incorporated doing business as Jasmine Asian Cuisine, 7-Eleven Southbridge Street in Auburn. And this is going to be change of officers and transfer of stock. We have all the documents in front of us, and I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing for Feng Restaurant Inc., Jasmine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Have we represented -- oh, thank you very much. First off, I'll give it to the board. You have your documents in front of you, and this is for a change of officers and a transfer of stock. Has anybody got any questions? Mrs. Goodrich.
Is there going to be any change in the day-to-day operation at all?
In terms -- good evening. My name is Mei Hui Hu. I represent Feng Restaurant Inc., and to answer your question, there is not going to be any change to the operation. Really, we just wanted to have the younger generation of the people who help out at the restaurant have a stake in the restaurant business, and therefore, we are coming here to add them into our shareholders and also give them a chance to participate as officer of the corporation. But Ms. Feng, Feng Zhou, still is going to be a majority shareholder, and she's been working at the restaurant and physically, you know, present there most of the time for the last 10 years, and I don't think anyone, any patron will feel any difference at the day-to-day operation.
Thank you.
Anything else? Would you like to add anything more about what your plans are to do out there? We just have the transfer of stock and the change of management, and I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted to say.
I have nothing else to add. As long as our paperwork is in good order, I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you. Being nothing else, has anybody in the audience got anything? Being nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it, and failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just comment that I think it's great that you're giving your younger employees an opportunity to grow within the organization. Well done.
Thank you. So being nothing else, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
The next we have for 7 o'clock, it's now 7 -- oh, I've got 7:04, but we're doing all right. CZW LLC from 850 Southbridge Street in Auburn. It's on-premises all-alcoholic beverage license. There are representatives. I'll ask for a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Would you please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do?
Sure. My name is Attorney David Shablon, and I represent CZW LLC, and with me tonight is one of the managers, Lou Meng Chia.
Okay. Has anybody got any comments? We have our documentation package in front of us with all the application for all the information that presented, so.
I did have one question. I'm hoping the town manager can just -- Ms. Jacobson, sorry, I do have a question.
I'll give you time to -- sorry, just need to ask a question.
And I'm sorry I wasn't able to get this answer from you earlier. I'm just curious as to why this didn't go to DCG.
My understanding of this is that the attorneys had wanted to come to the board first to see if the board would be amenable to giving a liquor license. If you do vote for them to have a liquor license, then they will move forward with the rest of the process, which actually would end up at DCG, whether they needed planning board approvals, ZBA approvals, anything like that, site plan. So it hasn't gone to that phase because my understanding is they wanted to see, first of all, if you were willing to go forward with a liquor license, and if you were not, they were not going to go through the rest of the process. If you are, then they will go through the rest of the process.
Because the lease of the premises is contingent upon my clients getting a liquor license, and obviously, if they don't get that, then there's no sense in going forward with the permits.
Right. So always practice, we don't send liquor license-only applications to DCG. They go to DCG if it involves other issues. Liquor licenses being under your authority don't go there because of all the requirements that have to be met by the state, but it would have gone to DCG had it been in concert with a site plan, parking, and other issues. So it would -- my understanding is if you get the liquor license tonight, then you'd be moving forward and filing whatever applications and paperwork you need to file with the appropriate board conditions.
Yes, that's correct.
And will that point go to DCG?
And I appreciate that. I know that we don't address issues like parking, but it's generally addressed at some point, so.
Correct, and it will be. As soon as they file those applications, it will go to DCG, and you'll get those recommendations.
Our motion then would probably be to include that, you know, this is all dependent upon DCG meeting and recommendations. Is there any other comments? Mr. Shablon, have you got any other comments? Any other questions?
No, I don't.
Then being none, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
And is that including the?
Well, it says all departments and commissions, so I think that addresses that. Thank you.
And it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
The best to you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next we have on the agenda is.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. If I can just ask you a question on these last two agenda items, and we might have talked about this before. We get these packets that are public records, that are part of the DCG, I mean, part of the ABCC application, but my concern is that we have people's bank account numbers and personal information on these that are public record. Is this something that we can look into redacting for the public?
Certainly. We'll look into that and find out from the ABCC what we're required to put on a public agenda.
Yeah, I mean, we look at the packets that we have and the amount of personal information that's here, and I know that it's all part of the process, but if it's -- I'd like to see us look into if it's allowed to redact at least the bank account numbers or whatever, social security numbers.
That's a great note. Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, just when Dan Carpenter texted me that he won't be here, so I asked to hold his items later.
Okay. Moving on, we go to communications under item 6A, the police chief recommendation for Halloween, which is a couple of days away, and his recommendation is 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It was the same as last year. And chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the recommendation is similar to what we had last year. I think we kind of came together as a group and formed a consensus as to what would probably work best by increasing the time, maybe, was it an hour?
Yep.
That we change it, and that worked fine. We didn't have any issues whatsoever.
Great. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the chief's recommendation to hold trick-or-treating from 5 to 8 o'clock p.m.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. I would ask the board to move up items 7C and 8B while we have the chief here.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so under 7C, we have Action Bulk Distributors Incorporated doing business as -- wow. Family Entertainment Centers Coin-Operated Amusement Machine License at the Auburn Mall at 385 Southbridge Street. The chief. We've got an enclosed letter here also. Let's see if we can get this here out.
Yeah, it's applicable to this one.
Okay. Thank you. And is there a representative? Yes.
My name is Michael Fabrizi.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll have some questions from the board. Anybody got any questions or comments?
I'd just like to hear from the applicant here with his proposal list.
Would you please just let us know a little bit about what you want to do and what kind of an operation this is going to be?
Okay. It's a -- in the retail business, they call it a bump out. It's a small space at the Auburn Mall. It's going to have like 15 machines in there. When we call it an arcade, it's more of like a GameStop. People -- I was talking to Chief Lucas this morning about it. It's not like a congregation, people hanging out type of thing. It's a -- people come in, spend five to 10, 15 minutes at max there because of the small volume of equipment in there. We do have 16 other locations just like this, seven Simon malls, and they're -- it's a small area. It's like just under 1,000 square feet in the mall, and so we have about 15 machines in there, and they come in and play and they leave.
I guess I'm going to ask, how many employees do you have on duty at all times while you're in operation?
We have people that come in and out. Like, we have people that watch the store for us, and we come in four or five times a week to fill the machines and clean them and maintain everything.
How do you -- I guess if you could define, we have people watch the store. I mean, is there anybody assigned to that location during the operating hours from your business?
No. It's too small of an operation. It's, like I said, it's a bump-out spot where it's not like a full-scale arcade where people -- it's kind of like in and out, just like if you had, like I was telling the chief this morning, if you have the mom comes by and puts the dollar into the kiddie rides, it's the same thing. It's in and out, in and out, that type of thing. There's crane machines, a couple of video games, and things of like that.
I guess that's a concern because the way you had mentioned it, it kind of leaves it wide open that you've got people that watch. Well, who are these people? Are they authorized to do anything in your business space or anything to do with the machines? I guess I want to know a little bit more about the operation.
Well, the people we're going to hire are just people in the mall usually. Maintenance workers we hire. We've hired people that have stores next door to open and close the facility, to watch it, make sure there's no rubbish in the facility while we're not there, and then we work with security too, and I've never had really any issues in any of the other stores.
Okay.
I brought a couple -- I brought a -- this morning, I went to a couple other malls, and I got letters from the heads of security and mall supervisors and mall management that test into that we don't have any, you know, issues or problems, especially from authorities or anything of that nature.
Okay. Is there any other comments, questions? Yeah. I guess I'll get to you, and then I'll get to the chief, and you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've referred to it as a bump out. Is this an actual storefront, or is it -- so it's a -- so where -- give me a sense of where it is in the mall.
Where it is in the mall?
Yeah.
It's on the Sears, like from the parking garage, the Sears entrance, that corridor there. To your right would be a mail salon. Down the hallway to the right would be Sears, that little courtyard area. So right there to the left, so you'd walk in.
If I -- I believe it was a farmer's shoe store.
The last retailer, there was a hair salon.
Mr. Berthew.
So there's a page here that says below is a list of games currently in the Auburn Mall. So that we already have a business, but what's that scattered throughout the common area?
No, no. Those are there waiting for approval or, you know, for opening.
Oh, so they're not being operated?
They're not operating, no.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So they're being stored there? Is that currently in the Auburn Mall?
Like, we're ready to go if, you know, whenever.
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. Because I know we're going to hear from the chief, so when you address everything, if you could address this question. I know exactly where he's referring to now. When you walk in right there, it's the store that was the former hair salon, which is very close proximity to the door, to the entrance and exit.
Yes, it is.
Not a lot of security or traffic, people seeing what's going on. My concern would be being that close to the door, and anything that were to happen, no one would be aware of it. So I'd like to hear what your comments are.
Well, that would be a distinct possibility. I spoke to this gentleman this morning for the first time, and in all fairness to him, he was very nice and very polite, but I guess I take issue with a couple of different things. I called him last week to speak to him about moving his business here. I believe it was on Tuesday, and I didn't hear back from him until today, and it made me concerned as to if we do have problems, how responsive is he actually going to be? I was kind of surprised that it took that long for him to return my call when I left the message on the answering machine. And I asked him, I said, I called you last week, and I asked him where he's been, and he said he's been busy. Obviously, they run other places, and he told me that they had a place at the Greendale Mall, so I reached out to someone that I have worked with in the past on the Worcester Police Department, and he told me that he was very familiar with that because he worked that police detail there for the last 15 years, and he was familiar with the setup there, and he told me that my concern about nobody being there to supervise anything was well warranted because he said he never saw anybody there. He said it was his belief, and he could tell me if he's right or wrong, that they contracted with security to open and close the place. So I don't know how much of an actual vested interest is really going to be applied as to what goes on there and any problems that may develop down the road if the license before you is granted. You have the letter that I wrote before you in opposition to the granting of the license. It's my understanding it would still have to go to the planning board for approval through them as well as yourselves, and I just don't think that, given some of the problems that we've had there in the past, that this particular business would be a good fit for Auburn. It may be for other malls and other cities and towns, and it may even actually work there, but I don't think that that's the case here.
Any other questions, comments? Being none, I guess I would be in agreement with the chief, and I guess one of my concerns is that when you say others to watch and no employees directly in the facility and so close to a outside door where people come in and go out and not any real monitoring of the operation, what kind of people, what kind of, you know, activities go on in places like that, I'm not very comfortable with having a facility like that in such a, I don't know, closed-off corridor, if you will, that's open to the outside area and not being monitored. Is there any other comments? Yes, it's a little liberty.
Through the chair, to the operator. Would you be open to installing security cameras, or is there anything in place to?
Yeah, we have security cameras in most locations for our own use, and, you know, I got to be honest, we don't have a lot of problems. I don't -- when the board member just said that, the kind of things that happen there, that the chief went down to the mall manager and saw the location, it's what I call a stroller mall. It's not geared for teenagers, it's not geared for a hangout. You walk in, it's no different than any bank of machines in any mall, that they go in, they spend $3 to $5, and they leave. Is there going to be a couple of kids that hang out maybe once in a while? Possibly, but they do that in the food court, they do that anywhere else. It's not, you know, the idea of the arcades from the past, that's actually you just mentioned, the kind of things that happen there, that kind of bothers me because there's no support of that. I have letters here from security departments, and it's just, it seems to me like people are putting this way back in like the 80s when the seedy dark places with all the games down the middle. This is an open area where everything could be seen, and it's not, there's just not as problems like, you know, there are people that are conjuring here. I don't see them. Simon Mall is a big operation. I am in seven of them. If there was a problem, I don't even think they would even talk to me. I talk to the security down there, they do their best to do their diligence to watch and keep an eye on things. You know, occasionally, the only problems I have is maybe some rubbish on the ground, people lose a couple of coins, which I take care of that through phones, but as far as security or violence, it's just not there. It's just not there. It's not designed for that. I would love for anyone to go down there to see the machines that are there. A lot of them are for kiddies. My goal is to get 12 and under with their mom and dad, not 17-year-old kids, which don't hang out in malls anymore because of the invention of the phone. They just, that business is gone. My business is for kids, and they just, the problems that we're talking about just don't happen. They just don't happen. And if, you know, I could give you, I have just two places today because I ran out and got two representations from them, but there's other ones that we could call and find out, you know, what's going on. It just.
Okay. I thank you for that. For me, it's perception, it's location, and accessibility to the open where you have no employees. It makes me a little bit uncomfortable when you have no employee running a space and you have a constant turnover of people coming in and going out. It's not conducive to, I don't know, security, I would believe is the right word. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know we've had these conversations in the past about the importance of the mall, and it's actually one of our largest taxpayers in the town, and we've also had a concern with a lot of youth activity at the mall, and we want shoppers to feel comfortable and safe. I'm not prepared to support this tonight. I'm very aware of the chief's concerns. At the very least, I would like to get the name of other, you know, whether it's a Greendale Mall or Solomon Pond Mall, have the opportunity to actually look at it myself to see if it is geared for small children, but I can't support tonight a business that is in a storefront unattended.
Mr. Berthew.
I just have to agree that I couldn't support with the information that I have tonight. I couldn't support this. You know, you get involved with children if it is for small children, you don't have anybody there, you know, you go through your winter months, and children get sick and everything else, and there's nobody there to maintain the facility. So, you know, we're -- I'm sure there's a lot of good to it, and I'm sure kids get some enjoyment out of it, but we have to look at the other side of things, you know, what can go wrong, what might, you know, what might happen in the course of a day. If a child, you know, goes in there and gets sick, you know, all over the floor, there's nobody there. You're telling me there's nobody there, you know? So, I mean, I don't, unless somebody then calls you and lets you know that there's an issue there, then that, to me, is a health issue as well as being a security issue. So I can't support this tonight or unless I, unless other information comes through that totally turns me around, but right now, I don't see it.
Mr. Little Liberty.
I'll be in the minority and say that I'd feel comfortable supporting this tonight, but it sounds like the board wouldn't be comfortable doing that as a whole. I think the mall, I mean, we have machines there that are coin-operated and aren't manned regularly, just out in the halls, and I really don't see this as something that's going to attract a lot of people that would. And I really don't see this as something that's going to attract a lot of people that will, I don't know, cause any damage. But going off of what Mrs. Goodrich said, if we want to delay this to another date when board members can get more information, I would support that. But I definitely wouldn't support denying this outright tonight.
Okay. The equipment is there. If Mrs. Goodrich and the gentleman would like to go down there and see it, that would probably be the best thing. It's there already. You could go to Greendale Mall, or you could go to another mall, but it's right down the street from here, and they could see it and see what it's about. And like, can't read his name, I just mentioned, there is unattended equipment in the mall. Crane machines, there's a big video game in the food court, and there's kiddie rides and stuff like that, that some you could get sick on, some you could fall on, some whatever the concerns are, I understand. But doing this for 25 years plus and not having these issues in the mall itself is agreeing to do it, they wouldn't do it if they thought there was going to be a problem because they're the first line of defense. Before they have to call a city official is their security, their people, and they know what the operation is. So that's why I'm concerned a little bit about what you're thinking. So that's why it would be a good thing, maybe if somebody would go down there and check out what's down there. When I say it's for children, then they could see. It's for children.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
So just to be clear, I want to, I would like the opportunity to visit a site that's up and running during the day on a Friday evening at 7:00 PM or whatever it may be to actually see the operation. And I appreciate that there are current coin-operated machines within the mall right now, but I see a distinct difference from having those coin-operated machines, whatever they are, whether it's a kiddie ride or a massage chair or whatever it is, out in the open. And my concern for a child's safety in an enclosed area that people may not be aware of what's happening. So I just want to have the opportunity to go look at the operation myself, address the chief's concerns, and then take an informed.
In the past, at the Auburn Mall, there was a wall of games, maybe, I don't know, eight, 10 games long, that was there for many, I don't know how long, but I've seen that before. That was not us.
And I think there was some issues with that. If I recall, there was some issues with that.
I believe there were.
Didn't they get anything else?
I just, to the town manager, when we have an application, I'm not sure if we have a deadline that we have to act on it, if we can continue it to the next meeting.
I don't believe, through the chair, that there is a deadline that you have to act on this type of license application, so you could definitely continue it.
So I'm not sure of the date of our next meeting, but I make a motion that we continue it to our next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, your next meeting is November.
Make a motion that we continue it to November 12th.
Second.
Motion made. Is a second?
No, a second.
Is there other comments? From Mr. Fabrizi? Any questions, comments?
Nope, I'll leave this letter with the chief and, you know.
Thank you.
If you could just leave the information of where you have other places locally, as well as your contact information in case any of us do want to go down to the mall. I assume it's locked at this point, so we can make arrangements to meet with you.
And chief, have you got anything else?
No, thank you very much.
So the motion been made, seconded to table this until November 12th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? November 12th it is.
November 12th is also the town planning and zoning meeting. I'm supposed to be there at that one. I think it's the same day.
No, it should be the 14th. They meet on a Thursday.
Oh, okay.
PDA, they meet on a Thursday.
Maybe I have the wrong day, okay.
They'll be meeting on Tuesday that week because of Veterans Day on Monday.
It could be a planning board meeting, I'm not sure.
We can come over here when you're done.
Yeah, they can work it out on the agenda for me.
If you have a planning board meeting, you can just come over here when you're done.
Both, okay.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in. Now, I'll entertain a motion to move up item 8B.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chief, we have, let's see, somewhere in someplace. There it is. For the fiscal year 2020 traffic grant. Chief, would you please?
This is a $12,000 grant that we'd like to apply to through the state. We've received funding to conduct this for several years now. It's to do traffic enforcement, distracted driving. I believe there's four or five different mobilizations that are used specifically, like at 4th of July, Christmas time, New Year's Eve, Thanksgiving, to do different types of traffic enforcement. It's a no-match grant that doesn't require any matching or additional funding. On behalf of the town, it's essentially free money. So we'd like to apply for that once again this year.
Is that strictly personnel or is it for equipment also?
It previously has been for both this year. However, it's only for personnel and overtime. There's no equipment component attached to it this year.
Is anybody else got any comments or questions? Bertheum?
Kind of along that, and just a question I noticed coming up School Street, South Street today, and I've noticed it in other towns, Paxton, these new foot-by-foot speed signs. Was that something from a grant or?
I believe that was purchased out of this grant previously.
This also, okay, so I like that. Okay, thank you.
Has anybody got anything else on that? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, chief. Thank you for coming in. And now, can I move up item 8E? 8E.
So moved. That's.
Is there a second?
A second page.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you have the fire chief come up?
Certainly.
Any further questions? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, chief. Thank you for coming in. And now, can I move up item 8E? 8E.
So moved. That's.
Is there a second?
A second page.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you have the fire chief come up?
Certainly.
Get him in, get him out. Good evening, chief.
Mr. Chairman. Members of the board.
We have in front of us a request by the fire chief to declare surplus equipment, and it looks like portable radios.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. In this year's CIP, we were able to replace all of the portable radios for all of the department members. So I'm seeking to take our current equipment, which will be, is nine years old this year, and dispose of it.
Okay.
Just a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Bertheum.
Are there other towns around here that can benefit from those, you know, that might have the same system that we can give to them for parts or whatever?
Yep, so that's a good question. Much of the equipment is, you know, with nine years old, being used every day, busy, some of it is going to have to be disposed of. It's not good for parts. There's probably about 12 to 15 radios that two departments within the district who have recently gone to highband, and they're kind of trying to patch together some beginner equipment until they can get some funds to replace it. So it would be my intent to take whatever is usable and give those to the town of Upton and New Haven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody got anything else? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the chief's request to declare surplus equipment, portable radios for dispensable purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, could I make a motion?
Yes.
To move up agenda item 7A immediately followed by agenda item 7D.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is all hold in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to take up, the first one is going to be 7D?
7A.
I'm sorry, 7A. That's approve the vote and sign the note for the sale of $3,442,985 bond anticipation note. And we have the town treasurer and our town clerk here.
Yes, through the chair, we have our treasurer-collector and our town clerk here to witness the signatures. So as you may recall, at a prior meeting, you had voted on the useful life of equipment. That was one step in, prior to issuing the bond anticipation notes, which is a short-term for a ban, which is a short-term borrowing. And you can see that the purpose for this are five items. The LED streetlights, the remaining balance of $97,900 for the replacement, that was voted at Maytown meeting in 2018. The two point, the remaining four were all voted at the Maytown meeting this year. The sewer was a specific article, the roads were a specific article, and the two school district equipment fall under Article 4 for CIP. So these are all just ban, short-term borrowing for the items that have already been approved by town meeting.
Okay. Is there any further questions? Okay, I guess then what we want to do is, you want to sign those documents tonight? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for item 7A to approve and vote, approve a vote and sign the note of the sale.
I'll make a motion to approve and vote. Prove. Where is it? Thank you.
I moved that the Auburn Board of Selectmen.
Oh, I moved that the Auburn Board of Selectmen, wait, where?
Instead of the clerk.
Oh, okay.
See, this whole thing.
I see. All right. Auburn Board of Selectmen certify that at a meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Voted the sale of.
It could be, Tristan, it can be voted that the sale of.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Voted the sale of the $3,442,985 bond anticipation note dated November 6, 2019 to TD Bank at the price of $3,442,985 is hereby approved and confirmed. The note shall be payable on November 6, 2020, and shall be bear interest at the rate of 1.58%.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions? Is there anything that we can hear from you? Okay, then being no question or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. So I guess we'll, have you come up and we'll sign those notes?
Well, I just wanted to approve it on here.
Is the certificate in coverment as to the tax exempt status? I'm sorry. No, it's available. Go ahead. Yes, three copies at least.
Just a copy?
Yes, and there's another one coming of the same thing.
Are you here or shall we spell it right?
This one is the treasurer's packet.
Okay. Let's see. I don't know if we're authorized.
That's the one. That's what we buy.
Okay, so the amount of this issue, okay, I see that now. Okay, thank you.
Because we haven't spent it yet, but we just have it out there.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Just keep writing vowels.
If you have, it is, have the note itself.
Okay. And that's it?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
And thank you, Debbie.
7D. No, 8, yeah, 7D is the.
Good night.
So you're going to go 7D, and then if you could, go to 7A.
7D and then 7.
And then 8, and then we can get to all the other ones.
Thank you, ladies. All right, so we've got to move up item 7D. That's the Auburn Youth and Family Services, one-day beer and wine license at the Pappas Recreation Complex for the annual road race on Sunday, December 1, 2019 at 7:00 to 12:00. Is there any representatives? Ah, we do have a representative. Would you like to inform us of what your plans are, please? And who you are?
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Kaufman, and I am here as the director of our 7th Annual Auburn Youth and Family Services Auburn Rocket Race. This year will be the third year that we are applying for a one-day beer and liquor license. Our brewery that we're working with this year is Greater Good, and it's a pretty quick event in general. We set up at Pappas, and we start, and our runners take off and then return back to the pavilion. We have a kids' race and a lot of kids' activities before the main event, and our main 5K starts at 10:00. We don't serve any alcohol until the runners come back in, and then we wrap up and are cleaned up and out by noon. So it's pretty quick. We haven't had any issues. We, our over-21 runners have to show their ID when they go to pick up their race packets. They're then given a bracelet, and then there's a to-drink limit. And once it's gone, it's gone. Nothing's for sale. It's really just to be meant to complement the food, but that's about it.
Mr. Bertheum?
Having participated as a walker, it goes off just the way Mr. Kaufman said. It's a great event. It's all over by noon, or, you know, with the cleanup, maybe 1:00. But it's a great community event. It's for a great nonprofit here in the community, and I'm all for it.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll just one-up you. I don't even walk it. As a volunteer, I don't run to my car in the rain. As a volunteer, I have to say, you know, we've had concerns in the past about these one-day beer and wine licenses, and this is so well-run, no issues at all, and for such a great cause. And you put so much work into this and show the board the respect that you've always given us to make sure that everything is done right. So thank you, and it has my full support.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Liliberty.
As another participant, did run.
Always has to be one.
It is a great event. I did want to ask, will Santa make an appearance again this year?
Absolutely. He might have a few elves with him as well, so.
I can say that when I was his age, I did run.
Okay, is there anything else? Ms. Kaufman, have you got anything else?
No, thanks. We just love to see everybody out. You're welcome to sign up the day of. If you want to just drink hot cocoa, that's okay too, and you can come and cheer on our runners. It's totally acceptable, so.
Thank you.
And we always appreciate the board. You guys have been really supportive of, you know, in the DCG as well, so we really appreciate it. Helps us raise much-needed funds, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Any further question or comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there another motion?
Make a motion that we waive the.
I will say that the questions that the board raised at the last meeting on the application, those questions have, the answers have been incorporated into the application. So if that's how the board wants to proceed...
No, I would think so. I think that's a great idea. We have been through the process. We have asked, had a lot of questions asked and a lot answered, and I think we can go forward, and let's take a look at the application and see where we go with this. Now turn that over to you, Mr. Huffman.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I guess, given the application's 30 or 40 pages long, I won't go through word for word, but any questions, you know, anyone has is probably the best thing. But I think the biggest thing tonight to say is, as we've worked through this process over the last, you know, number of months, is our goal here as a local initiative program, project, if you will, is, you know, we're seeking your support to move forward to the next step would be, as I think we put together, and Julie, you also put together, kind of the 10 steps, if you will, that happen once we move beyond here. Our application signed, assuming, you know, you vote affirmatively and we move forward, we go to DHCD, they start their review process, they commission an appraisal to make sure that all of the numbers and everything fit within the categories and all. Then they will reach out to the community for, you know, further comment on anything the community has, and once that's done, they will issue a project eligibility letter, which that essentially gives us the ability, what they call standing, to apply directly to the Board of Appeals for the comprehensive permit. That's when, you know, the, you know, the full approval process happens, and, you know, everything stemmed to stern gets scrutinized, you know, from the, you know, permitting process. As I think you all recall, we've, you know, we've met with local, you know, the different department heads, and we've, you know, spent a lot of time kind of explaining things. You know, Clay here's done a wonderful job as far as, you know, working on the, you know, municipal impact review, and, you know, just so we can really have a good picture of, you know, what this will look like, you know, going forward. Assuming the comprehensive permit issues, it gets recorded, there's a regulatory agreement that gets completed, it gets recorded, and, you know, from that point, that's when we would finish our final work for the financing and the construction would start. And then, you know, beyond that, you know, as things come together and we go under construction and all, the affirmative housing and all the selections plans are reviewed, and we go to market with things.
Well, Logan and Clay, I just want to personally thank you and your organization for coming forward and being part of our town. You've come forward with a lot of information to us. It's been a little tedious, and, you know, I can imagine it would be for any projects brand-new of this size coming into any town or city that, you know, they're unfamiliar with. And you have done, I think, a yeoman's job in presenting and answering questions and presenting information to us in a friendly 40B. And myself personally, I would like to say thank you. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
And thank you as well.
This is a big deal, you know, and it's, you know, something that we, we take serious, and, I don't know, I would say, for what it's worth, as we get to know this community, it just gets better. I learned more today about, you know, things that are going on, and, you know, the real sense of community that's here. Saw more of it tonight, which, you know, in some ways, we see less and less of today. So, I mean, we're, you know, proud to be part of the community. I don't know, we're actually working on other things in the community, you know, some things we're looking forward to do, and we just, you know, see all positives going forward. So thank you for that.
Terrific. Any board members got any comments, questions? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just echo what the chairman said. I know that it's been a long process and at times contentious, but as you just stated, it's, there were a lot of questions to be answered. We, our community as a board, you know, we answer to the people who put us here, and I, you know, since the start of this project, I wanted to be confident that I asked all the questions that needed to be asked, made sure, and I'm sure you could see this board does our homework. We read the documents that you send us. When we can find your little, you know, just little errors, we've read line for line, and it's important that we do that so we can make an educated vote. It is a significant project. It is a significant, significant impact on the town. Although we still may agree to disagree on some of the numbers, I appreciate your willingness to look at things like resident preference and things like that. So thank you.
Mr. Berthium.
I just wanted to comment that reading through the application, there was very impressive, comprehensive and impressive application, as well as the letter here from Mutual One. So I was pretty impressed with that. You know, we obviously take a project like this, and you have a certain amount of nervousness, and we will until 10 years after it's complete. But, but no, again, to echo what they're saying, you've made the process a lot easier for us by getting us all the information that we've asked for, so I thank you for that.
Okay. Mr. Little Liberty.
I just want to add a special thanks from two parts. One, this got me out of doing statistics this weekend. This was my excuse, reading through this. And two, for taking the time to walk me through the site. That was above and beyond, so thank you for that.
Has anybody else got anything else? Mr. Jacobson, have you got anything?
I think just that, you know, from our perspective, from town administration, we've worked very well with the developers. They've answered all of our questions, as well as yours. Many of our questions are somewhere, and we've shared all that information with you. So we thank you for asking the questions, getting the information out to the public, and working with us, including as we move forward, we've talked about a potential wish list that the developer had said that they'd be willing to work with us to identify some priorities in the town and become a real part of the community. So I can let them talk about that after the vote if you want, just a little bit, but I think tonight we were hoping that the board would take a vote so the developer could move this forward. I think we started this process some five months ago with the board, maybe even a little longer, and hopefully you've had all your questions answered, which it sounds like they are, so we want to thank you.
Has anybody got anything else? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept or allow Eastland Partners to put in the application for the local initiative program.
A second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Thank you.
Off and running. Now, have you got anything else left for us for tonight?
Anything that the board has, ideas, things that come up, I mean, we want to hear. And we definitely, you know, want to hear. And we've, we've, we've got 30 years in what we do, and as I say, we're proud of who we are, and I think our biggest thing is, is we come to communities looking to, when we finish, be able to say to you, you know, call the last one or the one before and the one before, and have them, you know, anybody you want to talk to. So we want to continue that here, and we'll do a great job for Auburn.
And through the chair, if I may, we have talked a little bit about how Eastland could help support some of the priorities in the town, and the board's identified and talked about some of that. Is it appropriate for you to mention what's in the application?
Certainly.
With regard to local impact mitigation?
What we've done is, is, you know, everyone's worked really hard in coming up with, you know, ideas with, you know, things that, you know, we can project out that maybe impacts, and it's really, some of them, it's hard to tell, you know, going forward at this point, because we don't know exactly. So we've allocated in the, in the pro forma and the application, a half a million dollars that will be set aside there, and we'll work as we work forward, and, you know, as time passes and we find out what, you know, we need to do, it'll be, you know, the money will be able to do things. I was even thinking about our conversation today, is, you know, the, you know, police and fire are in need of, you know, this communications, and I was, I didn't think about it at the time when the chief left tonight, but I was, you know, want to mention that and say we should start talking about that even now, because that may be one of those things that, you know, we can, we can get in process, because my understanding, there's communication-wise kind of a dead spot in town, and, you know, it's something that, you know, needs to be dealt with. So we'd like to do that as well, and we will.
That would be great.
And I appreciate Eastland coming forward and saying that. I just wanted the board to be aware of that, you know, that was, we were thrilled to see that in the application. And again, this goes back to the so-called, I don't know what else to call it, but the wish list, where we all got together over months and talked about priorities, and the board members submitted some of the things they wanted and tried to kind of rank those priorities. It's too early now to make final decisions on that, because as the developers are saying, some things we may not know, but the communications tower, we do know, and that was something that, to a person, almost every board member identified, that that was, they agreed that that would be a priority. So we're excited because it may give us an opportunity to address a need that will have a direct impact on this development, as well as the rest of the community, particularly those in that general vicinity. And other things also don't need to be decided tonight. This is a long-term process, but just wanted to let you know that they, the developers are committed to Auburn and have done so by putting that right in the pro forma, which I thought was a great sign.
Great. Mr. Berthium.
Through the chair to the town manager, just for public record or whatever, so assuming the project goes through and it's, you know, gets started and everything, if residents of, say, Albert Street, Laker Street, Hill Street, anything in that area, if they have any concerns, what department should they call here in the town, or will Eastland have a number that should be called?
Well, I'll turn to Eastland in a minute, but then, one of the next steps, so right now, this will go to DHCD, and then they'll get a letter to proceed, and at that point, they'll apply for a comprehensive permit through the ZBA. So the ZBA will have an entire public hearing process, and it's, that is the process for residents to ask questions and to express concerns, because it's the ZBA, that is the comprehensive permit process. That's the public process that gives residents the opportunity to ask questions. So at that point, it should go through the ZBA, and at that point, I'm sure they'll identify who a contact person is, but that's the general public process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in.
Thank you all so much.
Keep in touch and let us know how you do, and we'll be watching.
And there are other members of the development team here also that we've worked well with, the engineers and others on-site, the managers, so we're developing a good relationship where we feel very confident contacting the developer. So I would add, if there's any questions that the board has, don't even hesitate to run the questions through me, and they get back to me within a day.
Well, thank you to you and your organization again. Thank you for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you for taking those items out of order. Now we go back, right?
Back to what?
So I think now you're on 6B.
Yes. And that's a request from the Massachusetts Rivers Alliance for Support of Sewage Notification Bill H. 3976.
Through the chair, if I may, I had recommended to the chair that we put this on the agenda because this was sent, there was an email that was sent, I don't recall if it went directly to the chair or it went to all of you, but it was something that affects all of you. So this is a group, the Massachusetts Rivers Alliance is advocating and proposing that other communities advocate for legislation that is pending. It is called House 3976, and basically, it is for identifying and creating a system for notification to communities when there is any type of release of sewage into water streams. As I, I wanted to be able to make a recommendation to the board tonight as related to this. This is state legislation. My reading of this, and I've read through several pieces of material, and a lot of it is in your package, this specifically applies to CSOs, which is a combined sewer overflow community, and there are several of them in Massachusetts. Auburn is not one of them. So this doesn't have a direct impact on Auburn. It will impact CSOs, because it would require a notification system for those CSOs, and there may be a cost to those CSOs to comply with this. I don't know that, because we are not one. So I think my recommendation would be, as you have done in the past on state legislation that doesn't have a direct impact on Auburn, I'm not sure that it's necessary for you to weigh in or support it at this time, because I don't know the position of other CSOs. Worcester is a CSO that's in the budding community. I wouldn't want to recommend that you support it if we come to find out that a neighboring community didn't support it. So I would just say that you probably just pass on supporting it, because there's no direct impact on the town.
Okay. Any questions? Being none? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll move on to item 7B, which will be seasonal open-air license on town property, the Boy Scouts PAC 101, non-perishable food drive at Auburn Fire Station, 47 Auburn Street, and that'll be Saturday, November 16, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. As we have in our packets, we also have a letter from the fire chief saying that he requested they set up an municipal lot adjacent to the station, and I believe they know that. So that will go along, but if there's no other comments, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver of the application fee as for the application requested.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, let's see. 7E. All right. We have 7F, the annual vote to reaffirm the Board of Selectmen code of conduct policy for the, per the policy. And we do have the policy in front of us. And this is something that we have worked on for quite some time, and in the last sentence of the introduction, the first page, this policy shall be reaffirmed annually, following each year's organizational... the Boy Scouts PAC 101, non-perishable food drive at the Auburn Fire Station, 47 Auburn Street. And that'll be Saturday, November 16, 2019, from 10 till 2. Okay, 7B. Is there anybody? No, there's nobody from the Scouts here tonight?
No, we did reach out and ask them.
I'll make a motion that we approve an open-air license on town property to Boy Scouts PAC 101 for a non-perishable food drive at Auburn Fire Station, 47 Auburn Street, on Saturday, November 16, 2019, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. As we have in our packets, we also have a letter from the fire chief saying that he requested they set up an municipal lot adjacent to the station, and I believe they know that. So that will go along. But if there's no other comments, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the waiver of the application fee as, for the application requested. Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, let's see. 7, all right. We have 7F, the annual vote to reaffirm the Board of Selectment Code of Conduct policy per the policy. And we do have the policy in front of us. And this is something that we have worked on for quite some time, and in the last sentence of the introduction, the first page, this policy shall be reaffirmed annually, following each year's organizational meeting. We didn't do it this year, and we were a little behind with that, so we definitely do want to get that done tonight. So I will ask that we reaffirm that. I'll make a motion that we reaffirm, vote to reaffirm Board of Selectment Code of Conduct policy per the policy.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, will that be left on the counter for all members to sign?
Yes.
Yes, it will be. Thank you. Okay. We have a drain layers license in front of us from Commo, Commo Excavating, from Paxton. And we have the documents here in front of us, and we don't have to have the applicants here, but we do have the application, and we do have letters here. And we also have, let's see. Yes, we have a couple of letters of recommendation here, from Lester, from, also from Paxton. Any questions? And also from the city of Worcester.
On the last page.
Oh, on the last page, thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve. Oh, thank you. And I'm sorry, and it's also from the Board of Sewer Commissioners in our town, from Jeff Mitchell, that they recommend this license. I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We have now item H, Discussion and Potential Vote on Board Goals and Objectives for Fiscal Year '20. And we do have those in our packets. Sharon was put those in. And I don't know if you've had it, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to see, I know that we haven't done a lot of work on this over the year. I'd like us to adopt these policies, to actually get some work done on them, and ask for some input and clarification on which subcommittees and who's working on these, so that we can all participate in the goals of the committee.
Okay. And so you wanted, you're taking all three of them?
Yeah, because I mean, we agreed, and they were.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, I believe you already have your live streaming policy?
Oh, yeah.
So the first one is completed.
The second.
So the second two.
Okay, so it'd be review of the entertainment licenses indoor and outdoor, and I know you were a big advocate for that, because it's something we should definitely be looking into, and we should determine what the subcommittee is.
Yes.
And also allow the chair and one member of the board to perform a comprehensive review of all the Board of Selectment policies, with the input of the DCG on specific policies or import back to the full board. And we, I have been lax on that, yes, I have been.
No, I'm not saying that. I just, I think they're good policies, yeah.
We should be doing. And I think with those two alone, I think the objectives and goals are right there in front of us, with plenty of work to do.
I'll make a motion that we adopt review of entertainment licenses, and allow the chair and one member of the board to perform a comprehensive review of all Board of Selectment policies, with input from the DCG on specific policies, and report back to the board as our two goals.
Second. All right. Is there any further discussion? Being none, I guess what we will do is, I will, as Mrs. Goodrich said, we have to find out who the subcommittees were that decided to do the review in the licenses, and the chairman and one member of the board to perform a comprehensive review. So we want to find out who those are. So I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And if we could look into our records and be sure we know who's doing what.
Through the chair, I guess I would just ask for clarification, if you're looking to establish the same committee members, or if you're looking to establish a different subcommittee, given that it's now, I think that's what.
I think we can determine who's going to do it here tonight.
No.
And I'm happy to, I mean, both of them I care about, so.
Yep.
All policies in general.
Mr. Berthew. I was just going to say that I think we would find out who was on the committee, and then see if they're still able to do it. But if you want to establish the committees tonight, I'm perfectly fine with that. Okay. We can take a look at it and find out who is there, and then we can report back at our next meeting and get started. But in the meantime, it's good reading. So everybody take a look at it, maybe we can make some changes as a board, submit it to the subcommittee for any revisions, and we'll go from there. Thank you all. Okay. We have item 7I, and that's going to be for vote to hold tax classification hearing. That's coming already?
It is that time.
Where did that time go? So we're going to hold tax classification hearing on Tuesday, November 12, 2019, at 7:10 p.m. Now, that's Tuesday, the Tuesday after Veterans Day. We won't have our meeting, so it'll be on that Tuesday at 7:00, well, at 7:10. So we need a motion to hold that classification hearing.
Motion to schedule the tax classification hearing for Tuesday, November 12, 2019, at 7:10 p.m.
Second. Any discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Now, we have gift acceptances, and this will be for 7J. And the first we have here is for the executive office of the town manager, R.D. Berthew Business Consultants, file cabinets in the approximate value of $900 to be used by town offices.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second. Sorry. Wasn't thinking about that, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And then we have from Worcester County Memorial Park, file cabinets, desks, and conference tables, hutchers, and bookshelves, approximate value of $5,000 to be used by the town offices.
Motion to accept with gratitude, with a letter to be signed by the chair, sent to the Worcester County Memorial Park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
If I may, Ms. Chair, I just want to thank Lionel Selectman Berthew for bringing this to us, to ask if we could use it. I literally, he emailed me maybe 9:30 one night, and, you know, are you interested in this? I immediately wrote back, yes. I sent it out, figuring nobody would see it until the next morning, and by 10:00 b.m., everybody had already said, we need it, we need it. So these were items that we definitely needed, so thank you so much.
Okay, then, from the fire rescue department, Jeanette Bazinski, $100 for the fire department gift account. Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? From Boston Common Mortgage Incorporated, $300 for programs at the library.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, that's what we have for gift acceptances tonight. Proclamations and recognitions, we have a request from our town clerk, Debbie Grimo, for proclamation for the 2019 recipient of the John E. and Ethel E. Riley Outstanding Citizenship Award. And she has the proclamation here to us tonight, the letter requesting, what's the, and we'll follow along with the policies of our.
Motion to approve the proclamation as previously presented.
Second. Any comments? Questions? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Can I just say one thing about that? There wasn't applicants, but the people that were nominated this year, I had the privilege of sitting on the board or the committee this year. And I got to say, there's just some amazing, amazing recommendations, and it's incredible how many people in this town, I didn't even know some of the things that they do, and, you know, helping out neighbors and working for multiple committees, and it was just really, really kind of fun to read those letters, and every one of them was justified. And it makes it very difficult to pick one, and it has to be, or they, you know, the board wanted, or the committee wanted to pick just one, but everybody was definitely qualified to get awarded this citizenship award. So hopefully, everybody that sent recommendations for this year, we'll send them again next year, and we'll see even more of the outstanding citizenship that we have here in town. Thank you. Okay. And I guess just as a side, probably should have handled all the communications, but this is part of the note for the Riley Award proclamation. Just a note, the presidential primary is Tuesday, March 3, 2020, and the last day to register the vote is February 12, 2020. The annual town election is Tuesday, May 19, 2020, and the last day to register the vote is April 29, 2020. Just a little side note there from our town clerk. Let's see. Request by the Assistant DPW Director to declare surplus equipment for disposal purposes. And that'll be under 8A, and we have a letter here from Jeff Mitchell, the Assistant DPW Director for Surplus Equipment. It's a 1995 loader and a 2006 Ford F-250 truck. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the request to declare the equipment in Mr. Mitchell's letter as surplus for disposal purposes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we go down to the public meeting on 8C, the public meeting, October 30, on the draft master plan.
Through the chair, yes, thank you. There is a flyer in your packets, and we have been promoting this on social media, Auburn Cable Television, and our website, that this coming Wednesday, October 30, at 6:00 p.m. in this room, Board of Selectmen Room in Town Hall, there is a public meeting to review the draft master plan that is now ready to be completed. And as you probably know, this has been a multi-year process. We thank all of the various members of the master plan committee that we've had over the last, you know, three to four years participating in this. It was a massive undertaking, and as the board knows, we did this without the help of a consultant, other than whatever grants we could get, to hire consultants to help us with certain chapters. So that's, the economic development plan formed the chapter on economic development. The housing plan formed the chapter on housing development. The open space and recreation plan formed the chapter on open space and recreation. And after that, we also had a grant for technical assistance through CMRPC to do mapping and traffic analysis. So it's been a combination of various funding sources and technical assistance programs to get this done. And I really want to thank the master plan committee, very much want to thank our current town planner, Adam Menard, as well as our former town planner, Matt Fanoyt, for starting the process, and Adam now coming in, being here for a year and getting this finished up. So this is important, if the residents would like to come in and just view it, it is on our website, the whole draft, so they can view it before they come. This is to take any final comments on it. There have been a number of meetings, several meetings over the past almost four years now, all public meetings, to garner input, but this is one final meeting. So we encourage people to attend if they can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Comments? Being none, we have no tabled items. Let's see, we'll go back to 8D. Vote to authorize the town manager to accept and expand a community compact IT grant in the amount of $97,800 to purchase wireless access points, upgrading aging switches, and implement network security access control. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, as you may recall, we were eligible to apply for a community compact grant, because we are a designated community compact. We, you have to finish them before you apply for the next round, and we did have a round that we applied for, received, and completed, to do online permitting for our building permits and our animal control. That's completed, so now we are eligible to apply for this next round. We have identified, as has the state and has the federal government through Homeland Security, that cybersecurity is really a priority. We'll be talking to the board in the coming weeks and months about some of our cybersecurity plans. Some of those will be in executive session, because it is security issues, but I can tell you that we wanted to apply for this IT grant to implement some equipment and upgrades to our systems to make them more cyber secure. So our IT director, Mike Marino, did a great job working with a consultant who came in and looked at some of our systems, and gave him some input onto what we could do immediately to make some improvements to the system. So this grant has the amount of $97,800. From the last meeting to this meeting, the application was due, but we didn't get the information that we needed to submit it until about two days before the grant was due. So we couldn't come to you before we submitted it, so we're coming to you now and saying we did put the application in, we'd like to get your approval to accept and expend it, if we're approved for it. I don't know that we will be, and I don't know that we'll be approved in that amount. It is a significant amount of money. Even if we got a portion of it, it would still help us implement some of our cybersecurity needs.
Well, I can only say one thing, that Mike and Amanda, for your IT department, have been, oh, they've done great work. They send us notes, there's, well, the voicemail, even the upgrade in the telephone system, upgrades in the whole system. They're at it all the time, and, well, I think we've come a long, long way, and I think this grant tonight, I think, is definitely going to help us out, especially with cybersecurity lately. It's just, geez, who knew? But they are ahead of it, and they know what to go for, and I think we should support this 100%. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the fact that the town manager has already applied for, and to accept and expend a community compact IT grant in the amount of $97,800 to purchase wireless access points, upgrade aging switches, and implement network security access controls. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we can go to note tabled items, and under Board of Selectment Member Items, we have a discussion and potential vote to form a subcommittee to investigate ways to increase awareness and participation in local elections. And this was submitted by Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter is not with us tonight, so he asked if we would table this to the November 12 meeting. Can we do that? Can I have a motion for that?
Motion to table.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Any public, no public comments tonight? And we also have some minutes from September 9 this year, and September 23, and also from September 30. Is there any comments, concerns, questions, errors, omissions? Being none, I'll accept them as presented. And thank you, Sharon, for your work. Appreciate that.
Great job.
And. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, and good night.